Call the Beltrami County Work Sessions to order and we are going to go into closed session so um at this time I will accept a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Minnesota statute thirteen D point oh five subdivision three B for the purposes of discussing attorney client privileged information.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Carlson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gould. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are over to the other room for closed session.
Thank you.
Accept a motion to end the closed session and return to the open meeting.
Don't move.
Motion by Commissioner Carlson, second.
Second.
Backed by Commissioner Winger. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, we are back in open session. And we have the introduction of new employees. Shane, I think you have a new employee?
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm Shane Foley, Director of the Natural Resources Management Department. This is our new Forester Clayton Markcott. He comes to us straight from the DNR but he has he has a bachelor's degree in biology and then an associate's degree in fire science. He worked with the US Forest Service for five years, two and a half years with the DNR, and he's worked for the last nine years as a smoke chaser with the DNR. On top of all these things that he didn't write down that we're very excited about, in the interview process, it was very clear that he is a motivated individual that wants to work, which is awesome. He'll fit in great. He also has a lot of mechanical aptitude, which we have snowmobiles, four-wheelers, all that stuff that saves some money to have somebody that knows what they're doing, working on them in-house.
Those are going to die around me.
And then the last thing I'd like to say is just as a shout out to the foresters that work up in the department, training Clayton in for the last month and a half or whatever it's been. I think you guys would be very proud of the people that are working upstairs. They're hardworking, smart, make good choices. It has truly been a privilege to be the department head up there, so. Clayton has anything to say?
Yeah, I'll reiterate that about the folks upstairs, because there's, I've been on the the boot side of this, but never really been on the sale admin side of it. So I do have a little bit to learn, and the guys upstairs, folks upstairs have been more than helpful, much, much more helpful than my last job, that's for sure. So that's, that's very nice. It makes me feel very welcome, and if, and if I have any questions, they're very open to, to taking their time, taking a little time out of their day to, to help me out. So that, that's, that's fantastic. I'm, I'm really enjoying it. When I worked for the Forest Service, I did recreation for a while, engineering for a while, and then got into doing timber marking and, and silviculture regen surveys and stuff like that, and knew that's where I wanted to be eventually, so I finally, finally got one.
Clayton, where, where are you hail from? Where are you originally from?
Originally from East Grand Forks.
Okay.
And then a family, grandpa bought a cabin up here back in the 50s, and that's where I'm at now.
Oh, awesome.
Yeah.
Good.
We're on Rice.
Carlson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just curious, Shane, how did we get a reversal? Usually the, usually the state poaches from us. How did you poach? That was an awesome job.
I think that speaks loudly for you guys. That kind of switched the person's job that I took, actually, when only a block for me, and now I'm over here.
Welcome Clayton.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Right. Identify future work meeting topics. Anybody have any future work meeting topics they'd like to bring up at this time? Being none, we'll move on to Soil and Water Conservation District Annual Update. Sorry, we're running a little bit behind here Brent, but.
Good afternoon Commissioners. No problem. I, uh, I'll try to get you back on track. We are typically giving an annual update on SBCD activities. It's that time of year. So, uh, we're gonna do the annual update to the SBCD here. Kind of start out with what does the SBCD actually do? I mean, that's what, we get that question a fair amount. The thing that most people think about when they think about the SBCD is the tree program. But there's a lot more than just the tree program. I put a listing of things here. I'll call out a couple of things. The wood ash program is one that we don't talk about a whole lot, but that's a kind of a mutually beneficial program that West Fraser is our local lumber mill that sort buys a lot of our local lumber and produces a product, and they've got waste. They've got wood ashes, a waste product, regulated by the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. That waste product is suitable to be land-applied on ag fields to make that land more productive. It raises the pH of that land. So where we get involved is the MPCA regulates this waste and doesn't allow them to just give out this waste willy-nilly, and there has to be a program. There has to be, like any good state agency, they'll create a, a way to regulate something. So, um, landowners that are looking for free lime, essentially, they bring us their soil samples. We run a couple of models, tells us based on the soil type and in this area and this depth to water table, how many tons of wood ash can be applied on that field, and then we get that information back to the landowner and back to West Fraser, and then when they have that waste that they need to dispose of, West Fraser actually hauls it out to the landowner's field and dumps it for them. Then they just have to spread it and incorporate it into their land. Rainfall monitor network's another one you don't hear a lot about, but that's actually kind of essential for some of the activities, especially for ag producers. So like the, the drought monitors. They have drought monitors and they, they get pretty specific with drawing these lines of what areas are in drought and what areas aren't. Most of that information is based on these, this network of volunteers that are monitoring rainfall on a daily basis. They've got pretty sophisticated rain gauges that are provided to them, and they're, in turn, they're providing daily rain gauge measurements. And then that, that information is used on a, on a national level. We do a lot of other things too, technical and financial assistance to landowners. We'll talk about most of this stuff, again, here in the presentation, but the last thing, I guess, is the geologic atlas research. Right now, we're in the middle of compiling a bunch of data and beginning the process to develop a county geologic atlas. And then the bottom right Soil Health Technical and Financial Assistance. We just received a grant here the last year to hire a staff person to really do outreach in soil health world. That's really become a, the new, I guess, priority area at the state level, working on soil health. So, um, so where does the money come from? I would encourage you, don't look at the bottom line and think that's our 2025 annual budget. That is a, you know, total sum of all of the grants that we're holding right now. All of those grants are, are typically three-year grants. So like the bottom one is the Soil Health Staff Grant. That's about how much money is left in that grant right now. That grant expires at the end of 2027. Our annual budget is much less than that, but, um, just gives you an idea of the money that's funneling through and coming into the local area. The top orange line or brown, however it shows up on your screen, that really is kind of the SBCD's annual budget that, that is outside of grants. And essentially, that's the equivalent of our tree program annually. We, we get about $26,000 in revenue from the tree program, and it costs us about $26,000 to run it. So it's typically a break even adventure there, but a lot of different miscellaneous grants going on. That's where the, that's where the money comes from. Here's a little bit about the tree program. Every spring, we have a conservation tree program. We typically buy the trees anywhere between October and December. We create a tree order form, create the prices, put it out for public, and people are submitting their tree orders immediately when we put it out there, and we're basically just selling trees till they're gone. So we purchase about 20,000 trees at the beginning of the season, and then the pre-orders come in, and when they're sold out, they're sold out, and we try to get more and help landowners find more when they need to. So we end up selling about between 20 and 26,000 trees over the last few years. Last year was 24,000-ish. And then the water festivals, we have, we have two water festivals every year. We reach out to the area of fifth graders. One of them we do right at Gene Dillon Elementary School here in Bemidji. That's hitting about 400 kids right on their campus at their new school, west of the high school. And then the other one we do at Concordia Language Villages, we do that with the Red Lake DNR. And that one has some historical existence where they had some grants for a while where they invited schools like North Home Kellyer, Red Lake, St. Mary's Mission, Panima, Black Duck, trying to think if I'm missing any. It's, it's that, that whole kind of northern part of the county and the, and the reservation all to one water festival at Concordia Language Villages. So we continue that as long as we're able to financially support that. And it's a great day to, to hit a whole bunch of fifth graders every year and get reminded why we're doing this and seeing their excitement and energy level is, is kind of refreshing sometimes. The forest stewardship planning part, funding sources come from a variety of different funding sources. It depends on where the property is located and what they're really doing, but, but typically, when we talk about forest stewardship planning, what we mean is we're working with the landowner to help them pay for having a private forester write a forest stewardship plan. What that does is it allows them to enroll in a tax program called 2C or sign a contract with the state of Minnesota under SFIA. It's the Sustainable Forestry Incentive Act. And they get payments under SFIA based on the length of contract that they sign and how many acres they enroll, and the 2C, they just get a property tax break on that property. So some work better for other landowners, but the idea there is essentially it makes it possible for some of these private forests to stay in private ownership, so the property taxes don't force people to sell it or develop it or something faster than they want to. And then, once they have a forest stewardship plan, it also makes the landowner eligible for some other cost share, so they can implement some of those practices that are identified in their forest stewardship plan. Some people might want to do some wildlife management habitat stuff, and they, they can get some cost share dollars to do that.
Like a 25% landowner, 75%?
I'm not sure what the DNR does all the time, but that typically, that's what it is. Yeah.
Mine, but the.
Yeah. Yeah, I, that's, I know they were talking about changing the numbers to like 60-40 for when there was funding reductions, but I think they're back up to 75% cost share now, where the landowner only pays 25% of the cost of it. Just a kind of summary on the forest stewardship achievements for the last year, broken down by watershed, but overall, it was about 2,200 acres of forest stewardship plans that were written last year in the county that we, that we cost shared and helped pay for. Some people are still doing this on their own and not signing up for a cost share for it, for whatever reason. They want to just do it on their own timeframe and not work with anybody, and that's fine too. But this is the ones that we cost shared. Getting on to a few of the projects that we worked on in the last year. This is some pictures of the High Banks East project. This is a site on the Mississippi River just, just before Wolf, Mississippi River dumps into Wolf Lake. This was actually a collaboration with the Natural Resource Management Department. The former land commissioner had, had been working on trying to find a way to restore some of that hillside from the erosion that's been happening. That's been a recreation site for quite a few years, but over the last 10 years, the erosion has really accelerated on that site. There've been a lot more people going and doing a lot more things that they probably shouldn't have been doing, but we were able to find some funding to work on, essentially, we hired an engineer to design a restoration plan. The land commissioner approved the plan, and then we had a contractor go out and do the work. So that's what it looked like after it was restored there. There's still a place at the bottom where people are gonna come sit and hang out at the beach and swim in the river and stuff, but hopefully that hillside will be restored a little bit. And then this is the High Banks West project. I know the High Banks get confusing, because there's two of them and they're at opposite ends of the county, but High Banks West is over by the Clearwater County line, close to it. It's kind of by Baradon Landing, if anybody knows where that's at, but it's a, a campsite that's operated by the Natural Resource Management Department. This is also on State Trust land. The campsite is a gorgeous site that is sitting high up over the Mississippi River, overlooks this big floodplain area of the Mississippi River. And it's getting more and more popular. People are going, reserving it and camping out there, and they're making some improvements to the site. They just put in a vault toilet out there, kind of improving it a little bit, but inevitably, anybody that camps and can see the water, they want to get to it, right? It was a super steep bank going down to the river, and people just started making a path. Over the years, that path has just caused some pretty good erosion. I don't know if you can see on the picture on the left or not very well, but on the right side of that gully, there's, there's kind of a funny-looking tree that you see. Those are actually the exposed roots. So imagine, that's how much soil has been lost over that, on that site in the last, I don't know, 20 years or whatever it is. At the top, it's probably like six feet in elevation, and it just keeps sloughing off into the river and washing away. So this project here, we installed stairs. People can get safely up and down, and then restoring the vegetation along the sides and stopping or slowing the erosion hopefully. So, and this is a project that was actually, we had funding from the Mississippi Headwaters Board to do this project, so.
Yeah, I think we gave, I think it was close to 30,000.
It was $30,000 we got for this, and yeah, the project came in. I know there were some cost increases over the year and a half to do it. Lumber material prices went way up, but they, the contractor came in, did a great job at trying to control costs and came right in at just under 30,000, and so when we had the engineering costs and everything in there, it was just over 30,000, so it didn't cost the county anything. We used other grant dollars to pay for the engineering that was over, so that was great. We had a couple of BSU projects that were done last year. The one on the left, and actually the top one on the right are the same project. That was a BSU student-led rain garden project. It was a demonstration site that they wanted to do right next to their big BSU sign on Bemidji Avenue. It's essentially taking stormwater from the parking lot, from some of the parking lot at the, the rec center, the.
John Glass.
Fieldhouse. And running it out into that stormwater basin, and they planted plugs in there to get the, the plants going, so it didn't look barren right away. But essentially, that, the goal for that is to be a pollinator habitat rain garden. So hopefully they'll maintain that well, and it'll look good in the future. And then the bottom right picture is from their BSU solar project. They, they took a row of parking out of their O'Call parking lot, nearest the, like the softball fields and baseball fields. And they, we, we helped them pay for it, but they dug it out and made a stormwater swale in there. So they're taking some of their stormwater from that parking lot and infiltrating it into the ground there, and doing a pollinator planting and installing solar panels to help the Sustainability Office work towards their sustainability goals at the college. Conservation easements, another area where we spend some staff time. So far, we haven't been doing any outreach to landowners. These are just landowners that are coming to us that know about conservation easement programs, and they want to work with us and explore what that would look like for their property. So far, there's been four landowners that we've worked with on conservation easements. Just a quick kind of update, one on Moose Lake has been completed. Staff just completed putting out the signage out there this year. There's another one that's in progress on the Mississippi River that's about 74 acres of undeveloped land on the, on the Mississippi River, just north of Wolf Lake. And then near the headwaters of Grant Creek, there's about 28 and a half acres in progress. And then there's a pretty large rim wild rice conservation easement, working on on, on Little Turtle Lake. And the picture on the left is actually a heron rookery that's part of that 104 acres. That's not a Little Turtle Lake, that's just off the lake that the wild rice conservation easement protect the, the land from development around that rookery and the wild rice beds and Little Turtle Lake. Moving on to one watershed, one plan information. Just kind of basic background. Historically, state Minnesota requires county to have a local water management plan. In the past, those were all county water management plans. That, it's all transitioned to watershed-based plans now. We are a week away from getting approval from the state on our final watershed-based plan. That's the upper and lower Red Lake one. Just highlighting that our main priorities are the upper and lower Red Lake and the Mississippi River headwaters. We're active participants with the Thief River and Clearwater River plans. We are not so active. We're assisting as requested in three other ones, Leech Lake, Rainy Rapid, and the Rosa River plans. And then the Red Lake River one doesn't include any private property in Beltrami County, so we're not really involved in that one much at all. The Mississippi Headwaters 1WNP implementation. We just received the next round of implementation. There's just over a million dollars. It's actually a three-year grant, but we get a, a grant every two years. It's hard to keep those straight and identify those for people, but essentially what that is is to implement practices identified as priorities in the watershed management plan. This plan covers five different counties. Focus areas are forestry, ag, lakes, urban areas, things like that. We're the fiscal agent and the coordinator of the grant. Here's just a couple of examples of activities that the Mississippi 1WNP, we've done. Last year, the, the no-till drill and cover crops program in the ag activities. We worked with landowners in Beltrami County to install 170 acres of cover crops and pasture seeding. So essentially, reducing the need for tillage on 170 acres. What that's intended to do, it doesn't sound like a lot to me. 170 acres is kind of a drop in the bucket, but what we're really trying to do is work with these landowners to be early adopters of the whole no-till concept. We're making it possible. They don't have to go buy a drill. They don't have to do all these other things. They sign up for a program. They get paid some compensation for converting it into no-till, and we rent them the drill for, you know, the first three years to do it. And then they get to decide if it worked well for them, if they liked it, and they want to continue doing it on their own. And then we're doing educational events too across the watershed.
Step it up a little bit Brent. We're running short on time to get the other guys in here.
I will, I promise. The next, next two slides are just examples of shoreline stabilization projects. This one was on Cass Lake. Here was on Gull Lake. Pretty typical of lake shore restoration sites. Upper and lower watershed planning, I just said, next week should be Bowser approval. Should be working on implementation funding sometime this spring. And we just finished up with our help grants. We had pollinator plantings was the focus of these help grants the last two years. A couple of the big projects were Comer Landfill, and then working with the city of Bemidji. The Beltrami County Fairgrounds one here, there's a picture on the right. We do some dormant seeding after the frost was in place on that one. The Fairgrounds wants to have a pollinator plot as an example right up by the entrance to the Fairgrounds when you drive in. The fairgrounds wants to have a, a pollinator plot as an example right up by the entrance to the fairgrounds when you drive in. Um, here's some pictures showing some of the work we did with the city of Bemidji. There's like Brinkman Park at a seven acre site. Um, Lake Boulevard, between the Lake Boulevard and Lake Bemidji, there was two acres of buckthorn removed and planting. Uh, native plants to hopefully outcompete that buckthorn. Here's just kind of a summary of Keep It Clean program. The big thing here is um, got dumpsters out again this year on Upper Red Lake collecting human waste. Two new billboards went up and we were just uh, in the process of getting a. Uh, basically a small enclosed trailer to be used as a traveling billboard, um, to put in different areas. And then um, mostly it's the volunteers, not us as staff, but we're helping to answer questions, but they're working with um. The state agencies are trying to get the state to um, figure out what they want to do statewide for Keep It Clean. We've, we've gotten a grant and we've been doing some statewide activities the last couple of years, and that's going to come to a close here in two thousand and twenty-five. Our grant's going to run out and. We're not going to be super excited about applying for more grants to do statewide work activity on that. So that's the S T V C D update. Do you have any questions?
Anybody?
We can fly right into that.
Right on, yeah.
Update. All right. Um, I'll go quick through this one. The, here's kind of the slide I shared with the new commissioner orientation, um, and some of our other stuff. It's just a. Um, showing a big list. There's a lot of stuff that the Environmental Services Department does. Um, here's just an update on a few of the interesting things to me, I think. Um, one is about funding and staff. This chart just essentially shows that. All of our staff in the office are paid at least in part by grants. Uh, sixty-seven percent of our total staff expenses are non-levy dollars. Uh, it's kind of a summary of the last thirteen years of permits issued. I just, I keep this trend going, um. Really to show that the, the septic system permits that we're issuing, the number keeps increasing. The building permit numbers is just a slow, slow, steady girl. It's not a negative um, trend. It's, but it's not really growing that much. But keep in mind, we don't issue building permits outside of the shoreline area in the county where this is just in the shoreline, so. Um, you know, talking to Kevin, our GIS director with nine-one-one addressing, say. That's kind of in line with what nine-one-one addresses have been doing the last five, two years as well, just like a slow, steady growth, pretty consistent. Um, and then the Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment numbers. The number of variances has gone up every year over the last thirteen years. Conditional use numbers have stayed pretty flat. The interesting thing on this slide to me is the number of plats that we're getting seems to be increasing. We're getting more and more people asking about plating. So that tells me that some of the existing stocks of properties out in the county have been exhausted. And their developers are looking and there's a market to create new ones out there. Um, short-term rentals. So we adopted an ordinance. A few people have asked, how's it going? Just kind of here's the permit numbers, uh, starting in twenty-two. We had twenty-eight applications. Thirteen of those initial ones are still permitted in the county. Um, some of them sold, some stopped doing short-term rental. Some are still renting it out illegally, I'm quite sure. Some have converted it to long-term rental. Some have just moved into it and living there full-time and there's lots of reasons why those continue. And then some of them just sold and the new owner applied in the next year. But um, as you can see, the big thing there is just the numbers keep dropping. As I anticipate is going to happen over time. It's not going to be. A big number every year from here on out. Um, and then two other things, uh, shoreline management ordinance, just um. For those that don't know or haven't heard this already, we hope to have an updated ordinance for the county board to consider for adoption later this spring. And then the cannabis kind of update, um, they're saying the state rule should be finalized pretty soon. Um, I'm not sure exactly what that means, but I know they're talking early February is their target. I don't know if they're on track or not. Um, but they've got an application period after the court rulings and everything. They've got an application period open till March fourteenth. They anticipate holding a lottery in May or June for the, for the license categories that have statutory caps placed on them. And then um, we should be getting registration notifications shortly after that. Or for some of those businesses that don't have caps placed on that, we might get um, registration applications before May or June. But we'll see how that works for sure. And then we're starting to see delegation agreement resolutions trickling from townships and cities. They're not required to send them to us, but we're starting to see some, so. And that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Oh, looks like we're good. Thanks, Brett.
Thank you, commissioners.
All right, move this on to the Veterans Service Office update. Shane?
Deputy Commissioners. It's going, uh, Shane Gusterson, County Veteran Services. Um, just going to provide an update today on the office. Apologize, I don't have a PowerPoint ready to go, but I'll work through this pretty quick. Uh, first thing we're going to talk about is the twenty-twenty-four closeout numbers. Some office challenges, what we're looking at and what we're doing right now in twenty-twenty-five. Uh, the Nor- Northern Warriors Outreach Program and a Veterans Home Update. So I'll jump right in. Um, right now, uh, within our office, well, in the closeout of twenty-twenty-four. We had fourteen hundred veterans come to the office. Uh, to do any type of claims uh, or surviving spouses is a significant increase over the previous year. Um, which, which is phenomenal for us. Um, with that, we also did a significant amount of state soldiers assistance grants that we write in the office. And almost uh, thirty-eight thousand dollars in state grants to our veteran community. To do anything from optical dental, replace siding on a home or replace a septic unit. And we write those grants and help those lower-income veterans uh, get that issue taken care of quite quick. Uh, another one that we use is our D A V Chapter Seven. And that's direct support to veterans who are also um, having some financial challenges. And that was nearly twenty thousand dollars in twenty-twenty-four. Uh, directly from the, the D A V to help our veteran community. And that's to pay for things like tires or brakes or groceries. Uh, there's a veteran that. Or an active duty service member that just recently went through a fire. And we were able to work with the D A V to get him some direct support to pay for some boots and a, a new jacket, some other items that he needed for that, just to get him going right away. And so he's very grateful for that, five hundred dollar um, assistance to help him out. Uh, we also closed out the post nine eleven bonus program uh, that the state had. We were able to grab the last remaining veterans that we could find within our files, uh, and that in excess of fourteen thousand dollars to the veterans uh, that we're able to locate. So before the program closed and there wasn't any more funding available. Um, the reason why I'm even mentioning all of this, it's, it's because of your, your support with our office, the Veteran Service Office. It's completely different. Um, unit than it was previously. Uh, the support for the ACV SO position changed everything for me. Uh, to have an additional partner in the office to work claims. And then just most recently in April of last year, the um, new position for the case aid. Uh, it's just changed what we can do. We can focus on claims and development and appeals if necessary. And uh, without your support on that, we wouldn't be serving our community as we are now. So thank you. Uh, some of the challenges that we see in twenty-twenty-five, uh, the VA. Um, after the elections and our candidates are running for president, vice president. Internal issues with the VA, somebody was looking at their records. And so they, across the board, for anybody who works at VA Records. Uh, they wanted to remind us that we can't do certain things. Um, so the big one that I'm bringing up in our office, we just can no longer print all of the documents from the VA portal and provide them directly to a veteran. It's, it's part of it. It limits us from doing that and kind of puts a roadblock in there when we're trying to get veterans set up for. Um, other services where we can print them out, pass them to the veteran, they take them where they need to for the next step. Now, we've just changed. Now we take them to that next step and hand them off. Um, the other part of what we've done just last week is we created a kiosk in our office, working with our M I S. A group here uh, to create a computer system that the veterans can sit down, access certain websites. They can start to print off their medical records. It's all secure. It's not on our network. So it's a standalone portal. When they enter the information, when they log off, it all, it's all done. This goes away. There's, it doesn't have a memory to hold on to their information, so it's, it's good for them as well. Um, they can create their login and IDs through the VA. They can access their VA medical records or even their um, local Sanford MyChart for records that we need for their claim. Or if necessary, they can sit down and write their statement right there and hopefully we can expedite what we're doing with the claim process. So that's new and there's other veteran service offices that are interested in how that process is going to work, so they're going to be looking to us for some information on that. The next piece is of this, which is the big one, is the Northern Warriors Outreach Program that you have heard a lot about probably since November and kind of wondering where we're at with that. The grant has gone through. We received the funding, the hundred and eighty thousand dollars to move forward. Uh, we purchased the mobile claims unit, which is the Ice Castle Fish House, which is a custom build for us. They've already started that process, uh, I believe it's. Last week or just the week before, so we're looking at a month to a month and a half before that unit is completed. Completely custom. It'll have Starlink in it, so when we go to these remote areas, we'll be able to access, you know, what we need to help a veteran with a claim. Or just do some outreach, so it's going to be a, a great one-off unit for us to be able to reach them. Uh, handicap accessible with a ramp lowers right to the ground. That's why the, that we chose that Ice Castle style to do that. Uh, we just purchased the truck today and so we got a black uh, twenty-two, twenty-five hundred uh, Dodge Ram pickup. Uh, to pull that unit just fine, and uh, so that's in place today. And we'll be moving it out tomorrow to the next step to get it updated with some storage, a topper and some of the other items that we had labeled in the grant as well. So we're excited for that. And I'm just trying to speed it up, so if there's any questions anytime, just let me know. Um, and lastly, the Veterans Home Update, uh, right now. Toward the end of January, I had a meeting with them last week. They have roughly a hundred employees that are going to be in place now at the end of this month. So with that, they're going to expand the veteran community living there to twenty-nine to thirty, which is, has been good. It's been hovering around right around twenty-one to twenty-two for quite some time. As we all know, it's a seventy-two-bed facility and we're, we need to get veterans in there. Uh, the, there's currently three hundred and sixty veterans and spouses on the list. Well, there's two hundred and five that need that home today. So they're hoping to get this thing moving, but it all based on people who want a job. And if anybody's interested, interested in working for the Veterans Home, it'd just be a matter of reaching out to us and we can direct them where they need to go if anybody's interested. Or you know of anybody that's interested. Um, the last little piece of this, they have a half-mile loop. If they didn't prepare for this part, they have a half-mile walking trail at the Veterans Home. And they didn't put any benches there, so as spring comes around and veterans are starting to get outside and get that warm air. They're going to have benches that will be installed, so a veteran can actually sit down during that loop and not have to have a wheelchair and toe um, to take that break. They have some new exercise equipment that has been purchased as well. And the other part is the theater seating. They have theater seating, so they're not just sitting on your standard chair. That they're doing now. Be hard for anybody to sit there for two hours to watch a movie, so the veterans are going to get a little bit more upgraded uh, seating option uh, in the very near future, so. Right, but that's, that's it in a nutshell for right now.
Mr. Gould, I saw you.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Um, I went on the uh, state's website for the job openings at, at the veterans. Uh, home and it doesn't say how many are open, but it, it says part-time or full-time. They were all part-time positions. There wasn't one, there was maybe one that was full-time, so. Uh, my suggestion, my wondering is, you know, if they converted a lot of those to part-time. From part-time to full-time, I'm guessing they'd see a lot more applicants because, you know, people need a full-time job. Before they need a part-time job. Um, and those are, those are uh, good salaries, good benefits, uh, those full-time positions. So that would be my suggestion to run up the flagpole is see how many of those part-time you can convert to full-time and. They'll probably have some more success finding people.
Certainly, and a- as always, the housing is also an issue here locally, but it's.
Commissioner Carlson.
Uh, a quick question.
Yes, sir.
The mobile unit that you're almost, almost have for the, for the outreach, will that be used every single day? Every week of the month?
No, no.
So the, the reason for the question is because when Amy was here talking about some public health stuff. The, there, I don't know if it's, if it's even a possibility, but we did ask Amy to talk to you about. Uh, some kind of a combined use of that vehicle if it's, if that even is possible, I don't know.
Commissioner Carlson and I might have accidentally kind of all volunteered you.
Certainly, and, and if, if we can coordinate around veterans, we definitely can for the first two years. It has to be for the veteran community. Um, if we can make something happen in that sense, then absolutely, um, we can consider it. It's going to be out. Right now, we're looking, it's, it's going to be me taking out to figure this whole program, get it set up, develop the policy, procedure and how we're going to do this. Roughly three times a month on Thursdays. It's our lighter day within the office.
Yeah.
And we'll expand as things change in the office. Um, if we show that there's a, a great need for this as we get farther down the road, maybe it's determining whether or not we need to. Uh, change our office structure by converting, you know, the case aid position to an ACV SO physician, position in, down the road. Um, but that's too early to tell.
Maybe initially it could be used to, to use up public health needs for the veterans.
Absolutely.
You know, so it's not, so it's not exclusive, uh, but it, but it gets them introduced to using it with you, but it's for veterans until. The time period expires, whatever, but it'd be good for you to talk to Amy about it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Great. Anybody have any other questions for Shane? All right, thanks Shane. Appreciate the updates.
Thank you. Have a good day.
All right, and we're on to the twenty-twenty-five County Development Fund. The other Shane? Shane squared?
Hello, gentlemen. Um, you know, Shane Foley, the Director of the NRM Department. Um, just want to talk quickly about the County Development Fund. I was here a month or so ago and we talked about what the expectation was. Um, it turns out that we had some extra revenue come in from timber sales that opened up that we weren't necessarily counting on. Before the end of the year, so it actually looks a little more flowery than it did before. Um, are, it looks like in talking with Randy from my office, um, and then Jody as well, going through. Um, kind of preliminary apportionment, that seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars will be our. Um, our revenue that can be apportioned off of this year. If you recall from the last um, time I talked with you, thirty percent of our apportionment. Um, goes towards forest development activities. Um, which ends up being two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. Um, we actually spent in two thousand and twenty-four, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Which um, gives a balance of fifty-four thousand dollars. So I didn't know where this County Development Fund came from, so I did a little bit of looking. And it turns out that Beltrami County is the only county in the state that has this. And it was developed in either nineteen sixty-seven or nineteen sixty-nine by special legislation solely for Beltrami County. Which was interesting. Uh, maybe I'll do a little history talk at some point when things are more boring, but um. So how we've always done it here, or for mo- for the most part, we've taken the amount of money out of forest development that wasn't used in the previous year. And we've allocated that towards this County Development um, Fund. So if we continue that forward, there's this fifty-four thousand dollars that would be available. I think at my last presentation, I suggested that twenty-four thousand dollars was for sure available, so it's significantly higher than that, which is exciting for the county. Um, but I also suggested that last discussion that. Um, having a little bit of a balance in our Forest Development Fund is, is wise. Um, we, we'd never know what disease outbreaks are there and everything, so. I'd suggest a twenty-five thousand dollar to thirty thousand dollar um, balance would be, would make me a lot more comfortable in our office. Um, and so if we, if we allocate forty-five thousand dollars towards that County Development Fund. Um, for those grants, there would be nine thousand dollars left over, which in addition to the nineteen thousand dollars. That we currently have as a fund balance, that would bring us up to twenty-eight thousand dollars as a revolving fund balance that would stick with in case we need that for some forest development activities. So that's the information I have. There is an agenda bill item in the consent agenda that would be approving. Um, the forty-five thousand dollars being the maximum amount. It'll actually be about a hundred dollars less than that because of Jody's percentages that she uses, but it'll be very close to forty-five thousand dollars if that's. How you guys would like to move forward with it, so.
Questions for Shane? All right, thanks Shane.
All right, thanks. Back on schedule. You're welcome.
It's for Chair.
Administrative update.
Oh, thank you. Uh, just going to mention, based on the last topic of Mr. Foley. Uh, if you do approve the agenda item that's on the consent agenda for the forty-five thousand dollars to the Community Development Fund. Uh, I will go ahead then and immediately issue the request for proposals for that. I'm assuming. That will be okay with you. Since it's on consent, we don't get an opportunity to talk about it, so because it's part of the agenda now, I figured we'd bring that up. Uh, if you want any deviation to that or any caveats. Uh, to the program, you'll of course want to pull that item off the consent and then we can talk about those, but that would be, the intention is, if it's approved on consent in that amount, we'll just go ahead. Tomorrow, the next day, sometime this week, issue the request for proposals for grant applications. All right, very good. So uh, just a couple of updates for you. Um. You probably, some of you at least are aware of this, that Beltrami County Solid Waste Department's been selected for a Greater Minnesota Waste Reduction, Reuse and Recycling and Composting Grant. Uh, pretty significant uh, amount, about over a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, and of course, that's going to be used to develop. Um, the new recycling facility over at the airport on Fern Street. So um, that's going to be helpful. Uh, also. Uh, the sheriff and I did get an opportunity to go down to uh, the Young Professionals uh, Network for the Chamber uh, last week, I want to say it was, or no, two weeks ago. And we presented there on various issues and topics, uh, whatnot around the county, which was uh, interesting. Uh, quite a bit of interest. In fact, we keep getting feedback that the city presentation and the county's presentation are two of the most uh. Uh, appreciated or, or liked um, presentations, which is good news. Uh appreciated or or liked um presentations, which is good news. The jail project, just a couple of updates for you. Permitting is going pretty well at this point in time, as as you're pretty well aware of. We have the Department of Health and Corrections. Uh and plumbing inspection approvals so far, so that's good news. Uh we're close on the building code. We're going back on our second draft of of questions and answers at this point in time. We expect to have that wrapped up here, hopefully in the next couple of weeks. Uh we did finally get the city of Bemidji's um draft development agreement, so we'll be looking at that over the next week or so. And uh hopefully getting comments back to the city on that agreement. Also, we're uh picking back up on the building condition assessment for the old jail. Uh that was work that we started having some conversation about and. It was kind of during the time when we were bidding the project and we were finalizing design. We said, well, we just need to wait on that for right now. Let's get those other aspects of the project. For the new jail done before we come back and focus on the old jail. So now that that's pretty well underway, we've got our G M P, we've got those contracts secured. Uh we essentially are going back to the building condition assessment. And um the way we contemplate this is doing the assessment in two phases. The first will be done by K A. To essentially evaluate the systems and the infrastructure of the existing building. And then we'll use K M A, our existing architect, to then take that information and determine what possibilities there are surrounding a potential. Reprogramming or reuse or or reconditioning of that space. We are focused on three main options right now. One of them is just a complete demo. Uh the other one is a partial demo, partial reconstruction or rehabilitation, and then the third is a full rehabilitation. So those are the three three primary options we're looking at. As far as uses and that sort of stuff, we haven't gotten to that extent yet. We don't know. Till after the can build building condition assessment's done and after we know what the architect says can be done internally. You know, whether we're gonna have a bunch of small spaces, maybe a couple of large spaces, you know, realistically, maybe. No cost-effective spaces at all, uh depending upon what has to happen uh architecturally uh to and construction-wise to the facility, so. We'll hopefully get that underway with uh hopefully some results. We expect maybe late spring, early summer. Um just so you know, cause you sign all the bills for the county, uh you'll start seeing the jail project costs going up. That's to be expected. We're just finished with the, well, we're not quite finished, but we're finished with the billing for the pre-construction phase. That pre-construction phase will continue on to uh April, but we have exceeded the uh not to ex. We have not, we have reached the not to exceed amount. That's how I should say it. Uh so uh essentially we are capped on that expense, which is good for us, um even though there's some activities still needs to take place. Uh additionally, uh we reviewed and revised the spend rate sheet calculation. This was the one that we were using to identify how quickly we would need to uh. Identify revenue and how quickly we would spend that revenue on activities supporting the construction of the jail. And the rehabilitation or demolition of the existing jail. We had anticipated, as you might recall, we talked about the potentiality of issuing two separate bonds at lower amounts. That we would need us the second button. The first one, of course, is issued, but the second one, we were contemplating possibly needing by April of this year. Based on the new calculation, it doesn't look like we'll need that second bond until very late this year. So that's some good news for us because uh we won't, of course, have to bear that additional interest cost. Uh and additionally, we're collecting more currently in sales taxes than we are paying on the bonds because we only issued the first half of the total amount of the bonds. So that addition that we are collecting in sales tax, which is what's going to be needed needed to pay both bonds, will have a little bit of a surplus and we might be able to buy the bond. The second bond issuance down uh in principle, so that too should help save some money on the project as well, so we're we're excited about that. Uh and then lastly, I just want to let you know that Bemidji of the Capitol looks like it's shaping up to be on or around. Uh March fourth uh with a backup date of March the twelfth. I think there's a couple of things that are still being worked on there. Uh but that is the latest tentative date. I think I initially told you late February, but it looks like uh it's shaping up to be more like very early March. So that's all I have for you, but I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Anybody have any questions for Administrator Barry? Sounds good then. Um anybody have any items that they want to take off of the consent agenda? Or review? Are you okay with the development fund and everything else? All right, then we are adjourned until five o'clock. Thank you.